Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, January 31st. My name is Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board. For introductions, on my left Commissioner Jennifer Brinkman and Commissioner Deb Shore. On my right Commissioner Roe Amundson and Vice Chair Commissioner Bill Avery. Joining us from the County Attorney's Office is Mr. Dave Durbin, from the County Clerk's Office, Mr. Dan Nolte, and Kelly Lundgren. If you would join me to state the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister clerk, please start the agenda.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one or minutes, approval of the minutes to the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, January 24th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any corrections or discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Obstain.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through January 31st, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three are special presentations. The first one is recognition of the County City Building Art Exhibit. This is Shelley Burge.
Good morning. My name is Shelley Burge, and I want to thank you for a few minutes of your time to tell you a little bit about my exhibit that's currently in the atrium here at the County City Building. I am a native of Lincoln and Nebraska and often influenced my work having, living in the beautiful state of Nebraska in the plains. And I use my artwork, my quilts, to tell stories about memories and political views and just whatever I want to express. I did a few other examples to show you today. This first one was inspired. I attended a one-room schoolhouse on the west side of Lincoln from second through eighth grade, and I heard in 1988 that that school was closing. So I created this quilt to commemorate that, my wonderful memories of attending that school. And I'm often inspired by living in rural Nebraska, just outside the city limits. Birds, metal larks, sandhill cranes, chickens. So this is a metal lark quilt.
Wow.
I've been very lucky to have my artwork recognized by other organizations in the state of Nebraska and the city of Lincoln. I currently have a quilt similar to this one hanging on permanent display at the Nebraska Governor's Mansion. I have a large quilt that's 26 and a half feet by six feet, three inches tall that features sandhill cranes that hangs a permanent display on the university's east campus at Harden Hall. And I currently have two quilts at the International Quilt Study Center here in Lincoln. We're very lucky to have that here in the city as part of the Nebraska sesquicentennial celebration. And that will also be on display if, and if you are interested in learning more about quilting, March 18th is National Quilting Day, and there'll be free admission at the Quilt Study Center. Anyone interested in coming to that? I often use humor to express some of my opinions in my quilts. So this quilt, when I was growing up, we had a very ornery white rooster who would often chase us. So I created this quilt. Called Winter, Winter Chicken Dinner. And I don't know if any of you remember, there was a restaurant down at 27th and O Street, Chicken Delight, that had wonderful chicken. And so I've had that memory. And I often create a lot of my own fiber. So I dye and paint my fabrics. You'll see a lot of the examples I have here, use the fabrics that I've created myself. And this is a piece with, this is all fabric that I painted myself. Then it's cut up and pieced to into a fairly traditional pattern. And I learned to quilt when I was just early teens and started sewing when I was just four years old on a little hand crank sewing machine. So I've carried on that tradition. And this last quilt, I want to assure you that no actual chickens were hurt in the making of this quilt. Just a warning.
I think Peter would be happy with that.
Yes. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. That's, the title of this quilt is Why Didn't the Chicken Cross the Road? Well, he tried, he just didn't make it. And it was for a contest that we could make anything chicken-related for this contest. And I thought of roadkill chicken. I grew up in the country. That's just the first thing that came to my mind. And to get that tire track across the kitchen, my husband was very helpful in bringing the spare tire in out of the car. And we painted the fabric paint on it and just rolled it right across like a tire track. So I appreciate your time this morning, and I hope that if you're interested, that my quilts will be on display here on the atrium through the end of February. Any questions?
Question. I come from a quilting family. I think my mother has done over 100. So I have great appreciation for the math that goes in behind this, the angles and all that. What is the largest quilt you've ever done, and how many do you think you've done in your lifetime?
The largest one I made is the quilt that's currently on display at Harden Hall on the east campus. It's 26 and a half feet wide by six feet, three inches tall. Depicts the Nebraska sandhills, the Platte River, cottonwood trees, and then sandhill cranes. And the two featured sandhill cranes on that are actually life-size, about four feet tall. Has hand-painted details and hand applique and machine piecing. I came from a very traditional background. And when I first started out, you know, making quilts for the bed, keep you warm. And I probably made several hundred quilts, but a lot of them are smaller wall-hanging art quilt pieces. So not all big bed quilt sizes.
Very interesting. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah, I just really would say, those are fantastic quilts. They really are. You're definitely a great artist.
Oh, well, thank you very much.
And you know, I have to share Commissioner Shore's point of view. I grew up in a quilting family, too. And as a matter of fact, I also quilted when I was growing up. And I have a quilting frame, but I haven't taken it out for some time.
Maybe I've encouraged you to get it back out.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly. But anyway, thanks for bringing that in. Just wonderful work.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? Oh, any other questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the County Sheriff, 2017 Employee Recognition Awards. And this is civilian Employee of the Year, Chris Laird, Computer Technician. Life-saving award, Ronald Bowden, Deputy Sheriff, and Deputy Sheriff of the Year, John Brady.
Good morning. Thank you for indulging me and allowing me to make these presentations in this forum. It really is meaningful to the employees. We have an employee awards committee within the sheriff's office. Every year, other employees and command staff submit nominations for employees for a number of awards that we are able to present. This year, the awards committee selected three employees. The first is Chris Laird. Chris, come on up. Chris is a civilian employee, support staff, but he was a cop for 33 years with the Lincoln Police Department. And we hired him in 2014 after he retired from LPD. He was assigned to narcotics for much of his career where he maintained all of their electronic equipments. Since being with the sheriff's office, Chris heads our radio transition team right now, installed MACH and Trax, which are mobile locating devices for patrol cars, and was a key person in the upgrade and installation of our video system in the Justice and Law Enforcement Center. He works, the quote from his nomination is, "He works tirelessly to ensure officer safety from a technology point of view." Chris has had deputies on other shifts who have had problems with their mobile data terminals come over to his house to get them fixed. During his first year of employment, he closely examined our IS billing statement, resulting in a $30,000 reduction in the fees that we paid for our IS services. While it's difficult to put into words the contribution he makes to our office on a daily basis, these examples show why the awards committee selected Chris Laird as our Employee of the Year for our civilian staff. And with that, I'd like to present this plaque to Chris and introduce you to Chris Laird.
Thank you. It's an honor to receive the recognition here. And thank you, everybody from the sheriff's office for attending. And also, I want to introduce my wife, who puts up with me, and my daughter. My son couldn't be here. He's deployed with the Army right now. So I wanted to tell you that it's an honor and a privilege to work for the sheriff's office. We have great, hardworking, dedicated people and great leadership. So it's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Interestingly enough, in Chris's office, he's got a picture of him in a sheriff's deputy uniform. Back in the early 80s, we had a reserve deputy sheriff program. Chris worked for Eastern Ambulance at the time, or Sheriff of Ambulance at the time, and was a reserve deputy sheriff for us before he joined LPD. So it's kind of an interesting full circle that he's come in his career. Secondly, our life-saving award, Deputy Sheriff Ron Bowden. On April 27th, 2016, Deputy Bowden was transporting a patient from the Lincoln Regional Center to court. When the patient was picked up, Ron was notified and informed that the patient had not been feeling well and had experienced low blood pressure earlier in the day. Upon arrival in court, the patient's condition worsened, losing consciousness, slumping forward in the chair. Another deputy observed the patient's skin to be ashen. There were no respirations and cool to the touch. Deputy Bowden, who is our CPR first aid instructor, jumped into immediate action, cleared the airway, began sternum rubs, and verbally encouraged the patient to regain consciousness, among other life-saving measures. Lincoln Fire transported the patient to the hospital where she made a full recovery. Without Deputy Bowden's quick response and advanced training, the outcome of this event would have been considerably worse. Ron is a 25-year veteran of the sheriff's office. He's assigned to our Corps of Security and Prison Transportation Division. In January 2016, he was honored by the Department of Nebraska for the American Legion as their Officer of the Year for his performance in 2015. So with that, I want to thank Ron Bowden and present him with this plaque for his life-saving award. We also have a ribbon to be worn on his uniform. And with that, congratulations, Ron.
Thank you, Sheriff Wagner. And Captain Witty put me into this, for this award. He was also, during this incident in April, he heard me and another couple deputies experiencing problems with this inmate that we had transported. So he arrived at the scene shortly after we called for medical. So I do appreciate his help there as well. I also want to introduce my wife, Mary Bowden. She's with me, and I thank her for putting up with me as a law enforcement officer for 25 years. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And due to some scheduling issues, our Deputy Sheriff of the Year is in Fort Dodge, Iowa, at training and couldn't be here. But we want to honor Deputy Sheriff John Brady. John, on January 28th of last year, at 1:18 in the morning, John stopped a vehicle with Indiana license plates on the northeast edge of Lincoln for a minor traffic violation. It was apparent to Deputy Brady that the vehicle was lost. Upon contact with the occupants, a small child was observed in the backseat, sleeping on some clothes and not restrained with no car seat available. During that traffic stop, Deputy Bowden found the couple were the paternal grandparents of the two-year-old in the backseat. They had been awarded custody of the child, and were concerned the maternal grandparents may attempt to get physical custody of the child and return to Pakistan. The custodial grandparents decided to leave Indiana for another relative's home in Cheyenne, Wyoming. John verified their story, even speaking to the relative in Wyoming, to make sure that she was aware the grandparents were en route to her house. The couple were in poor financial condition, and had barely had enough money to get to Cheyenne and could not afford to buy a car seat. Deputy Brady contacted his supervisor to see if we had a car seat or accessed any car seats at that time, and was informed that we did not. John was not comfortable allowing the couple to continue with the child unrestrained, and knowing that we had no immediate resources to assist them, took it upon himself to help the couple. He had the couple follow him to Walmart where he purchased a car seat and other baby care items with his own money for the couple and sent them on their way. The next evening was John's day off, but he took the time to contact the Wyoming residents to make sure that the couple and the child had arrived safely. John was very compassionate and understanding of the couple's struggles throughout this contact with them, and gave his own time and money to make sure the child reached safety. In December, Deputy Brady was assisting other deputies during the investigation of a fatal crash. The deceased in that crash was still at the scene, and Deputy Brady had observed reporters photographing the scene from a distance. He positioned his patrol vehicle between the cameras and the deceased, so it was not visible on camera. When the cameras moved to get a better angle, John tactfully moved his patrol vehicle, thereby reducing needless trauma to the family deceased, seeing their loved one remaining at the scene. These are just a couple of examples of caring, compassionate, and a servant attitude displayed by Deputy John Brady. He is a 10-year veteran of the sheriff's office, serving as a patrol deputy, and investigated with the Marshals Fugitive Task Force and a member of the sheriff's office honor guard. John's a California native, having served four years in the US Navy aboard the USS Nimitz, was a MNT for several ambulance companies and a fire department before moving to Nebraska and joined the sheriff's office in 2006. So John will receive also a ribbon for his uniform to be worn as the Deputy Sheriff of the Year and a plaque, or a certificate as well. So thank you very much for allowing me to make these presentations in this public forum. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Amundson?
Right. And I just really wanted to say, Sheriff Wagner, you are blessed with having fantastic employees.
Thank you.
Yes. And you do a great job of leadership. And I want to thank the spouse, the spouses, who are there because they're definitely behind the people, behind the employees, and couldn't do it without that support. And I think that what you have just done, these are examples of such caring and compassionate and service-oriented people. You are very fortunate to have them.
You're absolutely right. I really am. We have great employees. Thank you.
And the county is very fortunate to have them, yes.
Yes. And behalf of Lancaster residents, I think we are very proud to have you and your deputies serve us. Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Appreciate it.
Next is number four, new business. Four A is a recommendation for the Purchasing Department and county we control toward a contract for the annual supply of turf fertilizer and chemicals to Crop Production Services, Inc., in amount of $4,045, and D&amp;K Products in amount of $117.60.
Hi, I'm Shelley Hinsey from the Purchasing Department. And there was an error in the bid line item number 45, and it stated that it was 24 ounces, and it should have been 480 ounces. So that dollar amount will change from $117.60 for D&amp;K to $2,352.
$2,352. I will move approval with the correction of the dollar amount to $2,352 and the change in the ounces, as mentioned.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation with the change of the dollar amount and the quantity. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a licensure renewal application with the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for operation of the Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center at 825 J Street. The county will pay $250 for the renewal license.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the licensure renewal application. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a second grant contract amendment to county contract C-16-295 with the Lincoln Parks Foundation, extending the completion date from December 31st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract amendment. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four D is a grant contract amendment to county contract C-14-554 with the Lincoln Parks Foundation, extending the completion date from December 31st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract amendment. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is an amendment to county contract C-10-590 with Bob Barker Company, Inc., for the annual supply of corrections staff clothing, inmate clothing, and accessories. The amendment extends the contract from February 16th, 2017 through April 15th, 2017. The cost of county is not to exceed $9,800.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the county contract amendment. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is an amendment to county contract C-15-228 with Graybar Electric Company using the County of Los Angeles, California Master Agreement number MAIS 1540125. The amendment renews the contract from January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. The cost of county is not to exceed $20,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the county contract amendment. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four G is an amendment to county contract C-13-602 with Waste Connections of Nebraska, Inc., for the unrequirements for waste and recyclable collection services. The services will, the service cost will increase by approximately $550 for the remainder of the contract term.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the county contract amendment. Excuse me. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four H has a lease agreement with Murphy Tractor and Equipment for the rental of one skid steer loader. Term of the lease is from February 1st, 2017 through January 31st, 2018. The cost to the county is not to exceed $4,500.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is an amendment to county contract C-16-151 to include additional professional services related to the Saltillo Road safety study. The amendment includes the portion of Saltillo Road from 14th Street to 27th Street. The cost to county is $3,800.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. So this agreement has previously come before you, and when it came before you, it was to study Saltillo Road from, I'm going to say, about 27th Street to just before 68th Street, which that is the area that is outside of the South Beltway. But in particular, that is the area that has a dramatic issue with safety. And so to submit for a state safety project, which in the end, construction becomes a 90-10 split. So 90% of it would be paid for by the State Department of Roads and 10% by Lancaster County residents, we have to do these studies. When we did the initial study, we determined that the cost-benefit ratio, which a cost-benefit ratio of a one, accidents to construction cost comparison basically is a pass. It's generally a project that's approved by Department of Roads. We have Saltillo Road, which had a cost-benefit analysis in the study of a four. The state came back and said, "We have concerns about the mile of Saltillo that falls within the city of Lincoln's jurisdiction," which is basically just west of 27th Street and just east of 14th Street. And they asked that that mile be added to our study and that we work with the city of Lincoln to have a joint project for this area. And so this $3,800 is to do that study and recalculate that cost-benefit analysis. In addition, the state has informed me that they do have funding set aside for this project in 2020. So it's important that we continue to move forward in an expeditious manner.
Thank you for that presentation. Anything? Any questions?
2020. Okay. I don't have it in writing. That's what we've talked about in the meeting. You know, again, we are in the very initial stages. The study needs to be redone so that we can recalculate that cost-benefit ratio for adding that additional mile of paving, and then we'll move forward from there.
Has the city been involved in this at all?
I have met with the Public Works Director as well as with the traffic engineer from the city of Lincoln and the assistant city engineer at this time. So I met with them before we moved forward with the project. They weren't necessarily interested. There is some interest now, and you know, their involvement is critical to this project.
Thank you. Meanwhile?
Okay, well, that explanation, I would move that we amend the, that we approve this amendment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the county contract amendment. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is a political subdivision tort claim filed against Lancaster County by Jason Geis, in amount of $1,000.
I move we deny this tort claim.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the tort claim. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number five is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda, we do so at this time. Next is number six, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a mid-year budget retreat on Thursday, February 2nd, 2017 at 8:30 a.m. at Unico, at 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 220, here in Lincoln. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, February 7th, 2017, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 at the County City Building, with the Board of Equalization immediately following. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 7th, 2017, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 at the County City Building regarding Amendment to County Resolution R-13-0064, Procedures for the Inspection of On-Site Water Supply Systems and On-Site Wastewater Treatment Systems Prior to Sale, Transfer, or Conveyance of Property in Lancaster County, Nebraska. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on 5-City TV Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under 5-City TV Video on Demand or 5-City TV on YouTube.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
That concludes the Board of Commissioners meeting. Next, I will call the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting to order.
A copy of the Nebraska Opening Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one or minutes, approval of minutes to the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, January 24th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion or correction? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman? Brinkman?
Abstained.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention. Number two are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion?
Assessor's office.
Do we need them?
For additions and deductions, yes. For motor vehicle, no. Correct?
Mr. Clerk?
I'm sorry?
Need the assessor's office for additions and deductions? We don't for motor vehicle tax exemptions, because those run through the treasurer's office.
Should we come back and vote on that and hit the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, we will hold that item. Next, we'll go ahead with the public hearing.
This is public hearing for motor vehicle tax exemption applications for the Corporation of Presiding Bishop of Jesus Christ of Latter, of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, Nebraska West Saint University, and Union College.
Okay. I will open up the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Is there anyone here to testify and support, opposition, or in the neutral capacity for these applications? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing.
Number four is action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the action on, or to approve the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Now we'll do the roll call on number two of the additions and deductions of tax assessment rolls. Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion, a second, to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.